We'll open with citizens' concerns.
Hi, I'm used to standing at a little microphone. I don't see one, so I'll just speak up. So my name's Jim Snyder-Grant. I live in West Acton. I just wanted to thank the town for their support of Acton Cleanup Week, which was held from April 27 to May 5 this year. And I just want to give a short report on how it went. The Asian American Civic Engagement Alliance and Green Acton worked on the cleanup together this year, and the town sponsorship was extremely helpful. Cory York took on coordinating all of our requests and helped us get on the portable announcement boards and in a town news flash and got us permission to put up our signs at recreation areas in addition to the usual road intersections. We used a poster designed by our high school allies from ACAA, and we used the reusable poster frames from my past political campaign, which are available, by the way, for any effort that seems like it will improve life in Acton. Green Acton decided not to create a road banner this year, not wanting to use more polyethylene and PVC, the two materials that typically go in over-the-road signs. We used the same self-directed sign-up system at actncleanup.info that we've used for the last three years, and more than 120 people signed up to clean up trash this year. We gave away all the 100 bags that we were donated by Waste Zero. And I'd especially like to thank a few groups that made a big difference. The Acton's Lion Club did their annual cleanup of Great Road between the Concord Line and Route 27 just a couple of weeks before Cleanup Week, so we started off with less to do. Thank you. The Nishoba Valley Neighbors Group, formerly known as Acton Boxborough Newcomers and Neighbors, did their first cleanup of Route 27 from Post Office Square up to Great Road during Cleanup Week. You may remember this group as the first to sign up for Acton's new Adopt a Street program late last year. Scout groups, as usual, cleaned up many streets. And the Acton Chinese American Civic Society brought together a group of 20 people to clean up most of High Street and Parker Street because we got a specific email about trash in that area. Members of Green Acton and the Asian American Civic Engagement Alliance cleaned many street segments. This was a great group effort that we hope will continue to grow. We're keeping the cleanup website at actncleanup.info open for at least the month of May if anyone else wants to sign up to clean a street segment or record what they cleaned. A new aspect that participants reported this year was that many people stopped in their cars to thank the cleanup crews. So cleaning up the streets is an easy and fun activity that everyone appreciates, and it helps improve everyone's experience of Acton. Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Terica Dicks from West Acton, and I am cleaning up my segment of the streets. I started already, but sawmill day happened, and I'm here to report on that as well as a concern. I cut down like 12 trees in my yard, and I didn't want to chip them, so I hired a portable sawmill to come down and cut it into clanks, which I'm going to use for my new garage. And there's leftover wood for art projects on Reg Terrace if anybody wants to stop by and get free lumber. And so that's that. It's local, free-range, organic. So that's that. And then I am also concerned about Danny Factor not being appointed to the planning board, and about now all the information that we're getting about how the town has, at least the Board of Selectmen, is engaging in terms of development and growth. And one of the things that I've been reviewing the tape from last week, and it's one of the board members said they called the master plan the "master growth plan." I thought that was really interesting, since the first goal, objective, is to preserve town character. So I thought I would say that. I'm sorry about that. And then also in the Selectmen's reports, and I really appreciate Selectmen's reports, but in the Selectmen's report, I think John Benson referred to Emily having changed her position as doing the right thing. And I feel like doing the right thing would be something from someone's heart and soul, whether they are defending the bylaw and master plan, and that that should be a decision themselves as opposed to what somebody else says doing the right thing. Thank you.
Any other citizens' concerns? We have some two open meeting law complaints filed concerning how March 26th meeting...
Point of order, Madam Chair. Are you missing Agenda Item 3?
No, I'm on...
On 2.
2.
Oh, sorry. I thought you... Pardon me. I thought you were up to 4.
It's not 7:10 yet.
Understood. Sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
John?
For a town manager update?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. We had a very exciting event last week at Insulet. They had their ribbon cutting for their new manufacturing world headquarters located in Nagarg Park. There were hundreds of people there, including the governor and a lot of senior officials from the state. And it was really quite a remarkable building and what they're doing in there and the technology that they're using to produce these insulin pumps or insulin medication devices that people wear. And it was a really exciting event. So that was great news. On just an update that we'll be bringing to the board, an update on the fire station. So if there's particular questions or concerns that you'd like us to address in our sort of first update to the community, I'd love to hear from you directly, and we'll make sure we include that in the presentation. Goal-setting, we've scheduled for Monday, so I look forward to your input, and it should be a fun goal-setting session. And I hope that you noticed that the municipal monthly came out May 1st. Seven pages, a lot of good news, a lot of exciting things, so please download it if you haven't already. And thank you to Green Acton. That's quite a report that you put together with the Cleanup Week. Our Public Works folks do everything they can to try to keep this town looking good, but the support that we get from volunteers and the coordination that you and your colleagues provided really makes a difference. So thank you.
Is that it? So we have a notice of an open meeting law violation for March 26, and failing to properly notice its agenda, and again for March 26 for the minutes that they're entering the executive session for its two insufficiently detailed and vaguely wording purposes. All right. It's not quite 7:10. Now this says we're holding it up to 10:00.
The public hearing scheduled for 7:10 was illegally noticed for the main meeting room, but we did publish the change, and we did post a sign up there notifying whoever's coming to see that of the change. So I would wait just another minute and a half to make sure we get an opportunity to see anybody that's running over here for that public hearing.
Maybe we can take the mothers out front?
What about the consent?
Consent items, number seven, Girl Scout Award, Danielle Butler, Amia Sabremanian, and Zoe Locke, June 1, 2019. Number eight, committee appointment, Lawrence Boisbet, Associate Member, Land Stewardship Committee. Number nine, carry-in license cancellation, Twin Seafoods, 541 Mass Ave, Acton. 10, one-day alcoholic beverage license, David Fair, May 19, 2019, Nara Park. 11, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Brian Brandt, June 29, 2019, Nara Park. 12, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Congregational Beth Elom. 13, multiple one-day alcoholic beverage license, Theater 3. 14, Selectmen Court. Is there a motion?
I move to accept consent items 7 through 14 inclusive.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, is there anyone here from Philo's? Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138, Section 12 of the general laws that the Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing in the Francis Faulkner Room 204 in Acton Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, on May 6, 2019 at 7:10 p.m. on the application of Philo's Great Road located at 59 Great Road, Acton, Mass. for a change in hours. The application is on file in the Selectmen's office and may be viewed during normal working hours. Do you want to speak to this?
Thank you, Roger. Thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate you inviting me here today. Yep, we just wanted to change our Sunday hours. We have the opportunity to open already. We're open 11 to 9, Monday through Saturday. Sundays are only open from 3 to 9. We want to be able to expand our hours with your permission.
Any discussion? Any questions?
What is the exact change in hours?
The exact change in hours, we're considering opening 11 a.m. to 9 p.m., 7 days. Mother's Day, we're hoping to be open for brunch if possible, so open to 10 to 7 that day. And then normally, just our normal hours may change to 11 to 9 if we get...
Any other questions?
No, just keep doing the good work.
Thank you very much, John. See a lot of familiar faces. And anyone who hasn't been there, you've got to come in and check it out. We have great food, great location.
Or is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Just a second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
Yes, good work.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. Unfortunately, I've got to run back to the restaurant. But thank you. I appreciate that. Yes.
Do we want to discuss the open meeting law?
I'll move that we refer these open meeting law complaints to the town manager and town council for a response.
A second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? John?
Sorry, it can wait till after the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
So thank you for referring that to me. I appreciate it. But what would be helpful is for the board to have a discussion about the complaints so that I can use that discussion to help to write the response. So basically, we received two complaints for the meeting on March 26 and for the... And on the meeting for the March 26, the allegation was that we didn't... The board didn't clearly state the purpose for entering executive session, and that the board didn't write the word "purpose number six" in the agenda. And I think the request is that that information be clearer to the viewing public of why the board is entering executive session.
That's perfectly appropriate, yes. And I see in the... In the dinner for tonight's meeting, purposes 3 and 6 and the specifics of going in are more clearly set out.
Although it's not... It may not necessarily be a requirement of the law, but we think it's a good idea to do that.
Yeah, it is.
And so the second complaint was that by approving the minutes for that same meeting, an additional violation occurred. So I suppose your discussion may be very similar as to how you want to respond to that?
It seems the same issues appeared in the complaint dated April 26, and I would just file a reply consistent with what we just discussed moments ago.
I do think it would be wise for us to get opinion from council as to whether there is a requirement to include the words "purpose six" or "purpose three." Not that... Not that we wouldn't include it, but I just think it's important that we know exactly what we are legally required to do as opposed to what somebody of Hines were supposed to do.
So in the response, you'd like us to clarify whether or not we believe it's legally required, but regardless, indicate that we would likely do that going forward?
Yes.
Any other comments?
Yeah, there's a... Part of the complaint is that the agenda apparently did not indicate that it was... We needed to go into executive session because being an open session would compromise the purpose of the executive session. Without having seen either the minutes or remembering the motion, I would check and see whether... Usually the motions do include that language, even though it might not be on the agenda. I think it probably meets the open meeting law requirements if the motion specifies that.
Okay.
All set?
I think I have enough. Thank you.
Onto the dog park. We have a dog park committee revise charge.
Thank you. Claire Siska.
It doesn't amplify.
Claire Siska, 14 Stowe Street, Chair of the Acton Dog Park Committee. Responding to citizens' requests, the Board of Selectmen formed the Acton Dog Park Committee in 2017 as an exploratory body to determine whether a dog park is needed and would be supported in Acton. In January 2018, the committee appeared before the board citing extensive data on the benefits of dog parks and broad-reaching support across the town, at which point the board directed us to find land and find money. We again appeared before the board in December 2018 with suggested sites and opportunities for funding through grants, the CPA, and fundraising. We were then directed to make a detailed effort to secure land and to hold a public forum, which is now scheduled for June 25 of this year. We are working closely with the Recreation and Land Use Departments and are ramping up our outreach campaign this spring. Our intent is to appear again before the board this summer with two to three specific sites, preliminary designs, and funding plans with the target of building the first of three dog parks in the spring of 2020. The committee feels that we've moved past the directives of our original charge and are simply asking the board, approve an updated charge that reflects our current and future activities as directed by the board last year.
Are there any questions for Claire?
Did you say you're planning on building three dog parks?
So based on the feedback that we've gotten... You took a little bit of a breath. Based on the feedback that we've gotten from the community and also the realization that we are not going to find four acres of land that everybody can access easily that some developer hasn't eaten up already, also because of the traffic getting across town and people's concerns about having like this big Uber dog park in their neighborhood, what we've decided as a committee is that it would be more beneficial to the town if we built sort of more... Excuse me, more pocket parks, and that it's easier for us to find that land that way. And without sort of tipping the hat, we are very much encouraged by the discussions we've been having about Great Hill and sort of making some enhancements to that and making an official dog park. We're also in discussions with the possibility of using those two lower southernmost portions of the Main Street parcel, which the Acton Housing Authority is going to use the other side of it, and they've been open to talking to us. All they need is that, those other two parcels for septic. So that would be a central location for a dog park, and we think that would be a really nice enhancement. And then something for the North Acton area, which we haven't identified the land yet. So take pressure off of the different neighborhoods, not have just one big park.
Okay.
So yes, that's the answer.
David?
Hi, Claire. What's the difference in... Between this charge and the original charge?
The original charge was a feasibility. The idea was just to prove to the board that there was a need, and the new charge says basically, go out, find land, and build park, which we really don't have the authorization to do at this point, and yet we're moving in that direction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sure.
I remember at one point you mentioned that... Or someone in your committee mentioned that there was a possibility of getting a substantial grant for the construction of the park.
Sure.
And the question is, would this grant be subdivisible into three separate pieces, or is it one gives the money, or what?
Good question. There's a foundation called the Stanton Foundation. They're... One of their fundraising... Or not fundraising, philanthropic things is specifically to build dog parks in towns in Massachusetts. We're working with Selby on that. He's going to be our contact, and he says that their statement is to build at least... Their goal is to have at least one dog park in every community in Massachusetts. We need to research whether or not they would support, or whether sort of once we get money from them for one park, would we go to the bottom of the list. We're also prioritizing, for example, Great Hill. We don't believe that we need to do that much work at Great Hill, and that we could not meet some of Stanton's requirements at Great Hill. So we were thinking that Great Hill would be one that we could fund with CPA and fundraising, and then our target for our, you know, landmark sort of funding for Stanton would be the Central Park on Main Street. Thank you. Okay.
John?
Yeah. How much room do you need for a dog park, you know, adequate for the needs of dogs?
You really need at least an acre.
Okay. And that's exclusive of parking?
That's exclusive of parking, yeah.
Okay. And Great Hill, you're...
Great Hill is... Well, we're talking specifically about the fields that are no longer used for soccer. Great Hill's sort of tricky. I just don't want to get into my whole July presentation because you have other things to talk about. But Great Hill, we would only fence in about a half inch or half acre section for those small dogs and dogs that have special needs. A lot of the people that use Great Hill don't want it fenced in. They have great big dogs that they want to run, so that was the compromise that we came up with. It's just to fence a small section for those dogs that are special. The Main Street parcel, you know, is kind of cutting it close. Getting parking in there is going to be tricky. We may need to negotiate with the AHA to just have a tiny little corner on the other side of that... I forget the name of that way, the right-of-way that goes into the neighborhood.
Well, thank you, and continue the good work.
Thank you.
Yeah, the committee's been hard at work. Lots of discussion. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the new charge?
I move to approve the updated charge to the Acton Dog Park Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the new charge for the Dog Park Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Claire. Mothers Out Front. Is there someone here representing Mothers Out Front?
Judith Ehrenstein. I live at Gregory Lane in Acton, and I'm the coordinator of Mothers Out Front. And I don't know if Lisa can get up my slides. I have a very short little presentation. Mothers Out Front is a national organization. It started in 2014 to address climate change. And what we are focusing on in Acton, which many people know, is gas leaks. We have over 200 gas leaks in Acton, and gas, as you may know, is 95% methane, and methane is a greenhouse gas that is 85 times more potent than carbon dioxide. And people worry about carbon dioxide. In some ways, they should be worrying about methane. That's the stuff that heats our house and cooks our food. The vision of Mothers Out Front National is a complete and swift transition to clean renewable energy. And what we're doing in Acton is working on methane leaks, as I said, and we have built a installation that represents all 200 gas leaks. I have one... Yeah. The other impact of methane that people don't realize is on trees. And I'm going to read you. Just leave that there for a second. Acton paid for a survey of all our gas leaks, which other towns do not have and utility companies do not do. And what they found out was that some of our leaks are incredibly large, over 2,000 square feet across the ground. So it's not deep, but it's across the ground. And what people don't realize is that the impact on trees is huge because if you have a dead tree, you have to take it out, and if you want to replant it, it's going to die again. This is an example of exactly that. These trees have been replanted, and they are coming back and dying. Salem is working specifically on methane leaks and trees, and they basically... They were planting, I think, 2,000 trees, and they went and did a survey and stopped the planting and saved about $20,000. So that's just one of the impacts of methane. It's a greenhouse gas. It's bad for our health. There are research happening right now about methane in our houses. If you light your stove and you get a little whiff of methane, that actually is not the methane your grandmother used. It's methane that is in fracked, or at least mixed with gas that's been fracked, and we now are discovering that there are other chemicals in fracked gas that's a proprietary mix, and there are researchers trying to reverse engineer and look back and say, okay, well, what isn't? You're not going to tell us, but we're going to find out. So anyways, let me go to the next one. Thanks. This is a fourth of our installation, so we've got three different colored poles or bamboo poles. The tall ones, the red ones, are 2,000 square foot leaks, representing those leaks. And then there's orange poles, which are up to 1,000 square feet, 999. And then the yellow ones represent up to 100 square feet. And this is the underside of the panels. They're not actually 2x4s, they're like 2x3s on their side, so it's about a 3-inch... There are seven boards, about 3 inches wide, that are going to be laying on the ground just for the concern about the soil itself and the grass. We're asking to be... Have it put in front of the library for two weeks, and then we'll move it to other areas around town. And we've spoken with the library, and they're fine with it. We'll put up inside the library a table with our display, which includes a map that the students made at the high school, the resource force, and that map shows every leak and the size of the leak, and it's a pretty impressive map. I personally now know what 200 means because having painted 200 poles, it takes a phenomenal long time. Let me look at it again. That's a very recent picture of them in my garage, all four panels. They're not fully done, but just about. They are custom drilled in. They're pretty tight, and we'll make them tighter when we install it. They're all numbered and labeled. And one more click, and a thanks to our team that did some of the painting.
Are there any questions? David?
Drew. Is there something that identifies this as gas leaks or Mothers Out Front?
Thank you.
Because it seems to me that this is an interesting art display, but without the connection, it may not help.
Yes, thank you. I forgot. Yes, thank you, I forgot. There are two panels that are in production, banners that will be six feet long. And one will say, "Gas leaks in Acton, one pole equal one leak." Then underneath it, it will say, "Mothers Out Front." And then there are two websites that people can go to. One is the one the students created and the other is Mothers Out Front.
And what do these banners look like? I mean, are they ground-mounted or they?
They're going to be, they have grommets on the side and so they'll be attached to bamboo poles, which will be hand-drilled in. I've got hand drills about a foot.
And so they're kind of in front of the?
They'll be on, so what I'm imagining is front of the library, cars going this way, banner here, a banner here. And they'll be, the backs of the banner will also have the language on it so people can see it when they leave the library and walk out to the front. Or if it's at the parking lot of 272A or at Donovan's or wherever else we get permission to put it for private land.
Thank you.
Peter?
I'm assuming that we'll approve this with no problem and that the town controls the lawn in front of the library. But have you checked with the library trustees at all?
Yes.
Yes, we checked with the library trustees and I frankly got a little confused around Historic Commission, Historic District Commission, did a little runaround. And I've spoken with them and I can present to them next week, but the order is not great. But they said that they don't have the authority to say you couldn't do it, but they wanted to hear and have a discussion understood.
That's good, yeah. The other thing is you mentioned that the town had done a study. I think we got a grant from the state to do a partial study. And then the town funded the complete study of the entire town. And this might be a good opportunity. I know John's been working with a coalition of many different cities and towns to get, is it Eversource or National Grid? I guess, it's the gas company, to work on these. So it might be a good opportunity at some point before this agenda item gets over with for John to let the public know what the town's doing proactively about this.
Yeah, I mean, I know John wants to speak. I will say that there's been a lot of effort through the legislation, but also through the DPU, who are the regulators of the utility companies. And though it's not law yet, it's been changed. A lot of what has happened has allowed the public to know that these leaks even exist. Before 2014, people didn't even know and they didn't, it wasn't public knowledge. And now it is. But DPU has changed some of the regulations. I don't know that it's like fully changed, but some of them are that leaks close to schools have to be fixed. Leaks have a certain volume, certain size. So it's really great we know our size because the large volume leaks ends up only representing 7% of all the leaks, but 50% of all leaking gas. So we know that these really large leaks represent a huge loss of gas. So it's a really nice, easy target and say, look, we've got these large leaks. So Prospect Street was one of the streets that had very large leaks and those were fixed. And it was coordinated with DPU, DPW, so local, which is really another crucial piece that the DPU is trying to regulate getting.
Yeah, I think there was one on High Street that was fixed as well. And I know Corey York from the DPW has been working with National Grid to make sure they're prioritizing getting repairs done. John could maybe fill that in a little bit more. One of the big issues, obviously, is who's going to pay for this? Whether it's going to be passed along to the consumers or not, the cost of repairing these. And I know that part of the legislation that's pending on Beacon Hill, I don't know exactly where it is, is to require the companies to absorb that cost, so.
Right, because currently, consumers are paying the cost of repair.
Okay.
And they're trying to change that now.
Any questions?
Right, and also the lost gas, yeah.
John?
No, I would, I would move that the Board approve the request from Mothers Out Front Acton to install temporary public art in front of the Acton Library.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Executive session? Is there anything else?
I could respond to what Selectmen Barry mentioned.
I would actually give the town manager an opportunity just to briefly talk about what the town's doing.
So the town of Acton is actually part of a group, Mothers Out Front is a big part of that group as well, as well as some other groups that are working with National Grid to try to get them to work better with us to address sort of the systemic issues that cause the leaks and cause them to sort of not be repaired and not be known about and ways to improve the communication between the utility and the local governments in each, in each area to try to make a difference in that. And I think we have another meeting coming up in a few weeks where I expect to get some additional updates. And I plan to present that to the board and the public this summer. But it has been, the lockout last year really delayed a lot of progress that had been sort of made. And I think, we hope that we'll start to pick right back up. And this is an, this is an interesting art, public art display. Look forward to seeing it out my window. Or I guess it won't be out my window, but look forward to seeing it.
There will be a need for an executive session to discuss the town's strategy with respect to litigation, namely, Town of Concord versus Littleton Water Department Land Court Case Number 18 Mis 00596. And to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property located at 1921 Maple Street for an open meeting on either topic may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town. Is there a motion?
So vote.
John?
I'm sorry, I just would want you to clarify that you're going to re-adjourn, but only for the purposes of?
Reconvene.
Reconvene only for the purposes of adjourning.
Okay.
As part of the motion. That way, the public knows that it'll be over once executive session's over.
So we will adjourn after the executive session meeting closes.
So the exact, the motion that you read should end, and that the board shall reconvene, but only for the purposes of adjournment. Reconvene an open session, but only for the purposes of adjournment.
Okay, we will reconvene an open session only for the purpose of adjournment.
So vote.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
We need a roll call.
Clerk?
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Mr. Chouter?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
It's just been, do we need to vote again?
No. We're in executive session.
We're in executive session now.